Good evening. Would you like to take our seats? Thank you. I'd like to call this legislature meeting ordered. Any of you all coming? Roll call by the clerk of legislature.
Order Castle.
Here.
Wilford Potter.
Here.
Edward Gilson.
Here.
David Holt.
Here.
Roy Rehill.
Here.
John Martino.
Here.
Bradley Trudell.
Here.
Paul House.
Here.
James Wetherup.
Here.
Mariana Chifro.
Here.
Linda Lockwood.
Here.
Richard Klein.
Present.
Patrick Twist.
Here.
Stephen Walto.
Here.
Ethan Emmons, Azus Ques, Thomas Crone.
Here.
Shane Rodwell.
Here.
Eddo Delcante.
Here.
Rashad.
Here.
Tim Stall.
Here.
Terry Wilber.
Here.
Jan Strasich.
Here.
Morse Rovella.
Here.
Daniel Fife.
Here.
Frank Studd. Wouldn't miss it. Thank you. Do not hesitate to turn. Please stand. Let us be thankful for this opportunity to serve our community, help us see beyond today, and make lasting decisions for those that we serve. Make strong in our hearts that which unite us, build bridges across all that divide us. Be thankful of the chance to make a difference in the lives of our loved ones and the citizens of Oswego County. Amen. How about lead us in the pledge?
Pledge. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, we'd like to have approval of the minutes from the Oswego County Legislature regular meeting on August 15th. So, second? Any discussion? All of your favor?
Yeah.
All right. Here. Thank you. Recognition. Mark Gruman, solid waste, 31 years, retired. To come forward along with the Infrastructure Facilities Technology Committee, Mark Hall and legislator Ed Gilson.
Well, the county of Oswego. Thank you. What's that? Recognition of honorable public service. The employment of Oswego County presented us as an expression of our appreciation for the dedicated service of the county of Oswego County and the welfare of its citizens awarded 16th September 2019. James Wetherup, 31 years of service.
Congratulations.
Well, congratulations on the job. Well done. You know, Mark started back at that earth when I was still doing Channing. He was probably one of the few people that had done their entire career at the earth. It can be a pretty tough place to work. He was a mechanic in that facility for a lot of years, and he was there during the retrofit, which has been a great asset to me. I'm like, well, how is this put together? He saw it, and I said, well, there's a piece of duck brick, which is pretty big, and it's a, it's on his record, and I said, well, how did he do that? And he said, well, they got a holder for it, and they craned it in. I said, well, I guess we're not going to fix it back. I really am going to miss his knowledge of the plant, and that he's had a great asset, and that he's done a wonderful job, so congratulations and joy. We want to thank you enough.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the Human Services Committee forward, along with the Youth Bureau Director Ryan Chetney and the City of Oswego Youth Court Coordinators Kristen Swimmer and Tiffany Halsted.
So, it's my honor to announce Oswego County Legislature proclamation that September 2019 is Youth Court Month. And here's the proclamation. Whereas youth courts are one of the fastest-growing crime prevention and early intervention programs in the nation, and are especially helpful in mobilizing community members and youth to take an active role in addressing such problems. And whereas using constructive peer pressure and a philosophy of teens helping each other, youth courts empower young people to hold their peers accountable for their behavior through a uniquely effective, youth-driven and youth-led process. And whereas youth courts exemplify the benefits of empowering youth to evolve into community solutions by developing leadership, problem-solving, decision-making skills, and educating youth about our legal and judicial systems. And whereas throughout September 2019, the 1,400 youth court programs operating in 49 states in Puerto Rico will celebrate the 18th Annual National Youth Court Month. And whereas Oswego County proudly joins in this observance, which recognizes the positive impact of the youth court system and raises awareness of its effectiveness as a tool for restorative justice within our cities and towns. Now, therefore, on behalf of James Wetherup, Chairman of the Oswego County Legislature, the entire legislature, and the citizens of Oswego County, we do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as Youth Court Month, and commend our youth court volunteers of all ages and their distinguished contributions to a more healthy and prosperous community for all of our families. Thank you all.
So, these guys, girls, are from various different school districts within Oswego County. They give their time, they totally volunteer, they do give community service hours for that, and aside from just learning about the law, they're learning about public speaking, and different avenues of any young person getting back to their community. So, I congratulate them all for working aside from just carrying cases, they also get the love of the guys who put their activities that we provided them through. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to call the Human Services Committee to remain up front along with you, Director Chetney, again, Kristen Swimmer, Brady Slimmer to join them. Let's see, Rehill's going to read a proclamation for the Paul Santorini Award.
All right. And I'm honored to, on behalf of the Legislature, proclaim September... What? That's wrong. I think I read one. To recognize Brady Slimmer as our recipient of the 2019 Paul Santorini Award for Outstanding Youth. So, whereas for 12 years, Paul Santorini tirelessly is a member of the Oswego City County Youth Bureau of War, serving the Oswego County, distinguishing himself as a leader and a remarkable citizen in our community. And whereas a nominee for the Paul Santorini Award for Outstanding Youth requires an appropriate display of outstanding leadership skills, is a role model to their community, and has benefited their community in an exceptional way, is involved in a current Youth Bureau program. And whereas Brady Slimmer has been a dedicated volunteer throughout the community, his volunteer roles have spanned from community events to local initiatives and cleanups, to youth court training where he helped inspire future youth court members. And Brady's dedication to his community can be exemplified in his pursuit of public service. Brady was in the Public Safety Program in City, City Hoses, joined the Oswego Town Volunteer Fire Department, became an EMT, worked for Mentor Ambulance, Twin City Ambulance in Buffalo, Wildland Caromedia School, and later became an Oswego City Police Officer, called within a few years. And now, therefore, being resolved, then on behalf of James Wetherup, Chairman of the Oswego County Legislature, the entire legislature, and the people of Oswego County, we hereby recognize Brady Slimmer for his enduring contributions as a leader among our youth, his contagious example of life through service, his passion for helping people, and for his daily commitment to a great little community. Thank you very much.
As I've said in the past, you know, Paul Santorini was a great mentor that was always involved in youth program programming, whether anything we did, he was the first one to RSVP and show up and be there when we asked him to do so. And when we picked the young person to go forth, Brady's done the same thing since 2016. He's been involved as youth mentor, as bio, as mostly every volunteer in the program we've done. Good news, bad news, Brady, you're officially kicked off of Youth Court. Technically, you could hurt the service until he's 21. Brady actually volunteered to carry cases out of that, but it's obviously some kind of detrimental stuff to a police officer. He is one of the newest recruits for the city of Oswego. He's an actual police officer.
This time, I'd like to invite Meg Henderson and Christopher Smith to come up along to talk about literacy awareness.
Oswego County, we proclaim September 2019 as Literacy Month of Oswego County. Whereas the need for a highly literate citizen increases as the county of Oswego moves towards an increasingly speculative future. And whereas more than 12% of the Oswego County adults experience literacy issues that impact severely on their lives and families, their ability to work productively, and their full participation as citizens and residents of our county. And whereas volunteers of the county of Oswego have enabled many residents to reach their goals through literacy volunteers by providing competitions clear into adults in reading, writing, math, computer skills, and English speaking skills. And whereas International Literacy Day, observed on September 8th, focuses attention on worldwide literacy needs and issues, realizing that the key to reducing crime, ending poverty, promoting democracy, and achieving personal empowerment lies in literacy. And whereas literacy volunteers of Oswego County advise the residents of the county of Oswego to join in highlighting the social, cultural, personal, economic importance of literacy. Now, therefore, on behalf of James Wetherup, Chairman of the Oswego County Legislature and the entire legislature, we do hereby proclaim September 2019 as Literacy Month of Oswego County, and urge all Oswego County residents to join in the effort to combat low literacy among adults and instill in our young people an appreciation for the gift of reading.
I just want to say a few words about Christopher. He is such a hard-working young man. If you think about it, we take for granted our reading skills that we acquire at such a young age, and he's so dedicated, he does a missing two during session, and he's working towards making his high school equivalency diploma. I'm proud to know him, and he inspires me to do better every day.
This time, I'd like to have the Emergency Management Office staff and Judy Laban, meteorologist in charge, and the National Weather Service for the Buffalo Forecast Office of Work.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. We Americans live in the most severe weather-prone country on earth. Each year, a startling 10,000 thunderstorms, 2,500 flash floods, and 1,000 tornadoes impact the United States. Almost 98% of all presidentially declared disasters are weather-related. For the Storm Ready Program, the National Weather Service gives communities the skills and the education needed to survive severe weather before and during the event. Emergency managers deal with severe weather and flooding more than any other type of disaster. Because of this, the National Weather Service and local emergency managers like Dale Currier have formed partnerships. Our missions are the same, to protect life and property. The National Weather Service provides early warning of severe weather and flooding, and emergency managers make sure those warnings get out to the affected communities and their municipalities, schools, fire, police, to ensure that proper action can be taken. Simply stated, a warning for severe weather or flooding is of little value, no matter how accurate. If the people in the warned area don't hear it or respond properly to protect themselves. The Storm Ready Program is designed to enhance the partnership between emergency managers and the National Weather Service to make sure that all aspects of communication, warning reception, and response are as efficient as possible, and that there are many backups in place in case one or more systems fail. Storm ready communities have improved the needed skills needed to save lives and property before and during an event. Since the county's original designation in 2004, I'm happy to say that Oswego County has not only met these criteria, but has substantially exceeded them in many categories. The continued efforts of Dale Currier, Oswego County Director of Emergency Management, and the Oswego County Legislature, the support that they provide, are to be commended for their proactive approach to hazardous and winter weather preparedness. It's my pleasure and honor as a meteorologist in charge to reaffirm the storm ready status of Oswego County through 2022. I look forward to a continued strong partnership between the county and the National Weather Service. Your great intentions.
Thank you.
Director Currier is out of town this evening, so I'm sorry he can't attend. We're happy to stand here and say thank you very much and get credit for what I was, what he was mentioned for. But the National Weather Service is an extremely important partner with the Emergency Management Office. Terry is very influential in receiving information from them and getting it out to many, many county partners and other people in our, in our communities who depend on that information to properly prepare. Even though our designation started in 2004, our partnership goes back with the National Weather Service over 30 years. And I can tell you, therein, they work tirelessly to enhance the information that we get. They provide information for us every week, but also when certain events arise, they provide updated information for us, special events, and we work to get that out to people in our communities, so we make sure everyone stays safe and everybody goes home. So, 2017, SUNY Oswego also ascended, and so we're very proud that we continue to have this high expectation of early warning, so we can give people the best opportunities for care. And they're extremely influential in that, so we appreciate a strong partnership with them.
Thank you. I would add, I'm not as good at remarks as Renee, so I'm just going to read. Certificate is awarded to Oswego County, New York, for improving the light, the timeliness, and effectiveness of hazardous weather warnings for the public through diligent and proactive approach of increased communication and preparedness. This community is recognized as your 2022. This time, I have the Public Safety Committee to come forward, along with Terry Bennett and Renee Fox, and I'll hurry up front, for Disaster Preparedness Month. Oswego County Legislature declares September 2019 Disaster Preparedness Month. Whereas national preparedness month occurring annually in September is an ideal opportunity for every resident of Oswego County, including citizens across the United States, preparing their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including national disasters and potential terrorist attacks. And whereas Oswego County residents have experienced emergencies and disasters caused by floods and flash floods, severe thunderstorms and tornadoes, high winds and severe winter storms. And whereas planning now for an emergency or disaster strikes is the best way to improve community recovery from disasters. And whereas the Oswego County Emergency Management Office encourages citizens to take plans with and for their family members for disasters and emergencies, and to make their homes more resilient to natural disasters. Now, therefore, I, James Wetherup, Chairman of the Legislature, and on behalf of the entire legislature, hereby declare September 2019 as Disaster Preparedness Month. In the county of Oswego, and all government agencies, private organizations, and the people and businesses of Oswego County to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together towards creating stronger, more resilient... So, I'd like to thank the Emergency Management Office, along with all our other partners in public safety that we work with here in the county for making sure that we are prepared on a daily basis, we all can sleep safe at night, and feel very happy that we have you as in your position in protecting us, so thank you for that.
So, this is an annual campaign. This year's campaign theme is Prepare Not Scared, and I just want to give you the highlights. I'm going to read what the different topics are. Week one was Save Early for Disaster Cost. Week two is Make a Plan to Prepare for Disasters. Week three is Teach Youth to Prepare for Disasters. And week four is Get Involved in Your Community's Preparedness. So, at, in Oswego County, the Emergency Management Office teams heavily with the county Health Department in getting preparedness messages out. We also encourage you to check OswegoCounty.com, and look, we will have continued information about being prepared, and you can also access Ready.gov as another information source. It is incredibly important that individuals and communities prepare ahead of time. The more prepared you are in the event there is an emergency, it's, it's less of a strain on the resources that are being used, and if you're okay, if you're good, make sure your neighbor's good, that type of thing. So, the better prepared we all are individually, the better prepared our community is. One final thing we did learn this morning at our LEPC meeting, that there is going to be a Citizens Preparedness Course offered down in Syracuse at the State Fairgrounds on September 24th. That's the one where you get the nice backpack full of preparedness equipment. So, little plug for that one. If you need to have some, if you need to get some equipment, that's a nice spot to learn about some preparedness and to get some free things to bring home with you. September 24th. If you want more information, call Terry.
That one's good.
No, this one.
Well, thank you. At this time, we could bring the Economic Development and Planning Committee forward. Dave Turner is going to stand in for Chuck Parker, who was delayed. He's President of the New York State Conservation Council.
All right. This Oswego County Legislature is proclaiming September 28th, 2019, as Oswego County Hunting and Fishing Day. Whereas President Richard Nixon signed the first proclamation of National Hunting and Fishing Day on May 2nd, 1972, writing, "I urge all citizens to join with outdoor sportsmen in the wise use of our natural resources and in ensuring their proper management to benefit of future generations." And whereas Oswego County boasts more than 33,000 acres of public land, including five wildlife management areas, 13 state forests, and the Sandy River Falls unique area. And whereas the third-largest white-tailed buck ever shot in New York came from Oswego County. And whereas the county is home to two New York State EEC... And whereas the county is home to two New York State EEC fish hatcheries and more than 300 miles of shoreline, including more than 60 miles of New York State public fishing lands along rivers and streams. And whereas the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation has estimated that sport fishing in Oswego County has an annual economic impact of nearly $43 million. And whereas National Hunting and Fishing Day will be observed Saturdays of September 28 at Salmon River Fish Hatchery at the 2030 Angler's Conference. Will now therefore be resolved, and I, James Weather, Chairman of the Oswego County Legislature, and on behalf of the entire legislature, do hereby proclaim that September 28th of 2019 is Oswego County Hunting and Fishing Day, and that together we welcome our visitors to come to Oswego County from points around the world to enjoy the natural resources we have blessed.
So thank you. You heard all of the details and the facts that Tim, the legislator, still mentioned about our great natural resources, why people come here. I guess as a segue from the last proclamation to this one, one of the disasters we couldn't plan for was that Chuck Parker had an emergency tonight and he couldn't be here. So I'm happy to accept this on behalf of Chuck. He's been serving the county and on the New York State Conservation Council and Sportsman's Council for many, many years. And I know that he'll greatly appreciate this once again. So thank you very much.
I'd like to put in a plug for the Oswego River. As of about a week and a half ago, the salmon have started up there. So if you are a angler and would like to partake, they are there in the river. So personally, I'm there.
Mr. Wilber, public speaker, then rose resolutions of the day. There aren't any. Thank you. Courts of county officials. Courts of standing committees. Reports of special committees. Legislative, Sorbonne.
Yes, I would just like to remark, I'm a member of the advisory group of Circus Regional Airport. And we recently had a new executive out there. And we had a meeting last week. We've got 24 nonstop flights starting in Circus right now, which is great. They're expanding greatly. And a lot of people have been up there and seen the new terminal that they worked on. So what I would like people to do, please, if there's issues or if there's compliments or stuff, sort of let me know what's going on because sometimes I can feed that into the new administration. I think the lady who left us, she's now in New York City, takes a large airport. So she did a great job, and I checked his gentlemanly too. So it's, it's a great airport. They're doing a great job, and I think we should also know if there's anything we can do better because it certainly enhances Oswego County.
Thank you.
I actually have to go back to report officials. I just want to actually acknowledge that our Sheriff's Department has been awarded an excellence for their accreditation. This is good from 2019 to 2024. This is from the New York State Law Enforcement Agency Accreditation Council. So good job for our Sheriff's Department. Takes a lot of hours and time that's been put into this, and they did a great job to get that at a level of excellence.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd also add that with the efforts of the DA and the sheriff and others, we recently, as I'm sure you know, we've got the height of designation for this county, which anything can help you. So that's, that's a great thing. So thank you. Moving on, Government Courts and Consumer Affairs Resolutions by David Holmes, Legislature Holmes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll propose a resolution, per request.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing Director of Real Estate Tax Services Tube in County of Oswego.
Yes, this is a question, how many Oswego, New York? And she would be accepting a term of six years beginning on October 1st, 2019, expiring on September 30th, 2025.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Terry, thank you. Resolution GC2 by Legislature Holmes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll propose a resolution, per request.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing transfer of tax-possessed properties to District of County Land Bank Corporation.
The Land Bank's previous exemplary of tax-possessed properties identifies several properties consistent with additions to the old county that could be driven to conduct review and take action, look back on the tax laws.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Terry, thank you. Resolution GC3 by Legislature Holmes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll propose a resolution, per request.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing 2019 tax property auction.
Three self-explanatory, all the properties are listed. It's going to be held at the Mexico High School.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just have a question. How many properties do you have?
I don't see them. I've got twice.
120?
120? I think it's 180.
118? Legislature, Mr. Stevens, 118?
118? That's what I did.
Legislature, Mr. Stevens, that list is in your packet.
I see it in my packet, but he didn't have my packet tonight. And I'm not that quick and handy.
We're not that age, sir. I'm sorry. Legislature, shot.
Can we turn all of the unsold properties to Land Bank? Can we? Can we turn them all over? If they're unsold?
Yeah, I do not know, but I believe that the legislature, that would be problematic. Treasurer, Renee Fox?
Can we turn them over to Land Bank?
All the unsold.
Actually, we can, but actually we sold everything so far. That's enough, yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Terry, thank you. Resolution GC4 by Legislature Holmes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll propose a resolution, per request.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution approving and offering support of consolidation of biosynthesis registration districts.
Okay, the town of Sandy Creek adopted the resolution under light net approving the consolidation of town and village of La Fona and village of Sandy Creek to the place of statistics registration district. The district is 3765.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Terry, Resolution GC5 by Legislature Holmes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll propose a resolution, per request.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing professional services contract, county clerk.
Yes, if this same company, the Jims, makes a side with it, it wouldn't continue going.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislature, Mr. Stevens.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators. And this was brought forward last year. I was against it at that time, saying that I felt that we could handle this on our own. And now I see this is going to be a contract that's renewable, renewable up to for five years. I think this is going to be another never-ending story where we're going to keep funding these people, kind of like the IQS deal that we have going on. I'm just not going to be in favor of this. I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
All opposed.
Resolution GC6 by Legislature Holmes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll propose a resolution, per request.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing entry into an option purchase agreement with Gypson Aviation Services LLC for the acquisition of a hangar and established capital project number 109.
I heard this would be a good deal for the county. Put us, put us extra room, decide for the one that we're going to be having there. And a lot more fuel sales. And, you know, put us more in line with becoming self-sufficient.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislature, shot.
My concern is that the county will lose approximately 7,600 annually in taxes. Bowling will lose 2,948. And the school district will lose 23,000 and change. I just don't see the income matching the tax loss. That's my concern. Numbers are my concern. I really would love everything to work, but given the weight of the building, I just have a problem with the numbers.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Legislature, Sorbonne.
Yes, this new building that's gone up there is capable of, for example, today, I take my own personal situation today, I was there. The helicopter Exxon has was there. This is a large helicopter pulls somewhere around eight people, and they come here quite frequently. They come out of New York and out of Pennsylvania. Exxon has somewhere around 45 power plants in the northeast corridors and the first part of the United States in the north shore. And this helicopter, along with their jets, they have a section of jet aircraft also. And I just by accident have the out there today, I was talking to one of the pilots, and I'm Ben Odomian, Calactra, he left. He's Director of Aviation for Exxon. And he just had raved about the services at the airport. He raved about the airport itself. He's really excited about the new building because they, in most cases, put it inside and pay anywhere from $200 to $500 a night, depending on the time of year. So it's a great service to one of the most expensive taxpayers in the county, and it's very important. And I've been there two and three times sometime this week. They've been there with either an aircraft or helicopter. And to have that kind of service is very important. So first of all, the service that we are getting from our employees out there is first-class. The figures that Marines go talking about, I can't, you know, once again. But the fact of the matter, this place was built by an individual, and he doesn't really want to hang on to the building because he wants to change his way of doing things and selling it to us at a reasonable cost, and we can utilize our tobacco money right there.
Well, my, my only comment would be, please don't say airport and accident in the same sentence. Legislature, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just think it's important, well, I understand legislature shots. People at Gypson Aviation, I'm sure, crunched the numbers beforehand. And if that was the case, I'm sure they would, they would remember building if they proceed that if this makes it beneficial to the whole park particularly the county that the additional space.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Legislature?
I just get really confused because I feel like any other business, if they're going to invest a million, almost a million dollars or something, they would have some sort of balance sheet, spreadsheet, some kind of commitments. I hear a lot about people being excited, which is fantastic. But in terms of like actual commitments, it's a 50-year longevity, right? And so if you, even if best-case scenario, you get your $1,000 a month in rent, it takes 70 years to pay you back that money. So I know I'm not including sales tax and maybe a $400 night stay up here, but it's mostly for inclement weather anyways, which isn't all year round. I just, I'm having a hard time seeing the spreadsheet because the hard numbers were never given to us. And I just find it irresponsible to go with that kind of money and something when you don't have any idea about what's going to come back.
Any other discussion? Legislature, Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators. I, I've seen a lot of things happening throughout the six years that I've been here. But this one is, we just got through talking about properties that are, we're picking up foreclosed, 118 of them, that we're going to sell, try to get back on the tax hold so that we can have income from the property taxes. We talked about the IDA going to develop an area for us to be able to get the property on the tax hold. And some of the biggest problems that we'd say that we have in the county that every department head says, and we ourselves say, are number one, is unfunded mandates. Number three is the delinquent taxpayers, people that aren't paying their taxes. So we're losing that money from property taxes. And number two, loss of taxes, is government-owned property. Here we are, saying that we want to give up. I know $7,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money to us in the county because ours is multi-million dollars, what we're, you know, our budget is. But that is, if you divide that, that's 10 extra properties that we would have to pick up in order to make up the difference in that. The town of Bowling, almost $3,000. Legislature, shot. Now, the big one is the school district. I called the school district and I asked them, the business administrator, said, "Are you guys going to be hurt by $23,000 of tax revenue that you're not going to receive?" And she said, "It's, you know, it's not a large amount of money," Legislature, to see. "But why are we going to lose it?" "That's well, because the county is going to take over a piece of property that would be paying you $23,000." And her question was, "Why would the county want to do that? Why would the county want to speculate with taxpayer money?" And I said, "I don't know." I said, "The business built it, and now they don't want it, and they want us to take it over." And my point is, there's stipulation in there that we have until September 20th to make the decision. And if we don't, we lose the option to buy it. We lose $1,000. But you know what? I say, "Let somebody else buy it. We keep the taxes. And if nobody pays the taxes in two years, we get them for free." So I'm saying that right now, you guys are all saying that we want to increase our tax revenue, and yet you're going to take a piece of property that's going to give us tax revenue and put it in our back pocket. It's just unreasonable. You just can't keep doing this. We gave a wastewater treatment plant away, and we could have sold it because we said, "Well, if somebody else buys it, they could do anything with it." Well, it still would have been on the tax rolls. Well, it's not on the tax rolls now. We keep taking things off the cash rules, and yet we keep saying that it's not our fault. Well, it is. We're the ones that are doing it. Nobody else. If he wants to sell, let him sell it to somebody else. $1,000 lost is nothing. I'm sorry.
Any other discussion?
I, a thought just occurred to me. Is this building currently under a pilot, or is it being taxed at the sticker?
Is Brandon Beckman? Mr. Stewart is here, yes. He can answer me, please.
No, I don't. It's not under a pilot. It's not under a pilot. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Legislature, Sorbonne.
I'm, I'm one of the few people, I think, in this room that worked quite hard on economic development in a sense of being on the IDA and also on regional planning and development. And if you don't have services for your business and your industries, you don't have a way to get them. You have to have services, you have to have infrastructure, you have to have all these things to have businesses or industry come here. And it's extremely important in today's world is to travel by private jet directly to the place, or a helicopter, whatever means you get there, and come back home that night. It's, it's quite, just, this is the way they like to operate. They come and they go back home the same day, possibly, or within two days. It's a very convenient situation. The Good Year of Limp is coming tomorrow at 2, between 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock.
I was going to announce that.
Well, I didn't want to get into it. They're coming here tomorrow just to sit down, to go over the game at the, in Circus. But we have these facilities, and we have an excellent group of people running them. And the chief pilot turned that today himself. I didn't even bring it up. So what I'm trying to say is, all this is needed to construct ourselves into the business world and, and hold on, that we can get out of that hangar, they, you can rent a fairly good-sized aircraft, $1,000 a month. So is that, that place right there can hold about four of them, hopefully, or have one that's a big, but so there's a large income coming there now. Most airports would be, would be in deficit. Our airport's running above even right now, money-wise, with the five pieces that are there. Somewhere in that vicinity.
Legislature, Mr. Stevens.
Several things, Mr. Chairman. Legislature Shad requested information on the cost to heat that building, and I don't believe she had gotten that information. If she got that information, I just defer to her after I get done. All right, now, the second thing, Legislature Sorbello brings up Exelon, and I have it from a good, very good source, that Exelon flies in and flies out, they get gas, that's something we supply, we don't in the hangar supply gas. And that's what they'll do, and you just said, Legislature Sorbello, that they fly in, they fly out the same day, so they're not going to rent it during the day time that they're here, for the thousand dollars a night. So I'm sorry, it's not a good economic plan. If it was a good economic plan, that gentleman would not be getting out of the plan. He wants out because it's not what he thought it was going to be, he's not going to be the moneymaker. He did not get into business and get the money that he has by having losing enterprise. This is a loss, he wants to get rid of it, it's going to be a loss for the taxpayers, we're going to wind up paying, and we lose eighty thousand dollars a year now.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close?
By most.
Thank you. Resolution GC seven by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing execution of agreement with New York State Department of Civil Protection Fund regarding the disposition of proceeds concerning certain tax-foreclosed property.
This piece of property has been assessed, D C has offered to clean it up, but the E P will validate it.
I would just correct you saying they have cleaned it up, there's a still fund lien, we've also foreclosed the property, and in order to release the lien on sale, this agreement would give you the proceeds fifty-fifty to the state and the county.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry, thank you. Public Safety Committee, legislator Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to present resolutions PS one to PS two for consideration as a block.
Thank you. Legislature. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry, thank you. Infrastructure Facilities, Legislature. Legislature Walpole.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, now for the following resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing appointment of a Squeo County HIPAA information technology security officer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's written, it's a recommendation of the Infrastructure Committee to appoint Frank Pollan, manager of information technology, as our major representative.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislature Christine.
Have we been in violation or anything? Is this new, or? We had, so we had somebody, we're just going to put somebody else in.
Attorney attorney address. The person previously appointed to this activity retired, so Mr. Pollan has stepped forward to take on those responsibilities, the clerk and I, pay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry, thank you.
Thank you.
Economic Development, legislature stall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I bring this resolution forward, and I urge its adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution providing, resolution providing for tourism promotion with the county of Squeo.
All right, thank you, this is the annual resolution that we put forward, and it formally establishes our Community Development Office as our tourism promotion agency, it allows for some funding for this state.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry, thank you. Resolution EP two, legislature stall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I bring this resolution forward, and I urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing agreement between Squeo County and Squeo County Economic Development Agency.
All right, this is the funding side of the agreement, or, sorry, a motion that I put forward previously last year. If you remember back in twenty seventeen, this legislature approved a study, called the Squeo County Economic Advancement Plan, and one of the, one of the things that had come out of it, that actually only started, that was a joint venture between us and the IDA, who paid up, they had, back in seventeen. As far as today, or the last years, one of the things that we had talked about, before I timed as a politician, as a legislator, you often hear about these studies, studies about studies, studies on top of studies, and one of the things that we had really felt strongly as a group was, we didn't want this study to become just another one-on-one stuff. We wanted this to be a living document that grew, that breathed, that we could, you know, to actually see some benefit from the money this was tied. So one of the things that we did just recently, actually last year at this point, was to agree at the October EEP meeting, twenty eighteen, to partner with the IDA in a joint venture engaging center state CEO to facilitate the implementation of the plan that we obviously had studied the year before. We do have funding to pay for this, and we count through last year's budget, so it will obviously not affect next year's budget anyway, and just the financial side of the agreement from the twenty eighteen committee.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislature Christine.
I defer to legislature.
Thanks, Frank, I have a quick question, the Economic Development Initiative Fund? Thanks. The Economic Development Initiative Fund, is that, is that in our budget, is that accounted for? Where this money is coming from? It will take a thirty thousand available in the Economic Development Initiative Fund. This is, uh, that may be the development efficiency, that may be, this, this. Said development efficiency. Okay. So, all right. I didn't think I recognized that one, so should that be, I guess, should that be corrected then? Yeah, the word I got, I'm actually confused, development efficiency. Development efficiency. Development efficiency. Yes.
Legislature Christine.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, fellow legislator, the study that legislature stall brings up, I believe I whole caucus voted against it when it was brought originally, because we felt that the IDA should be paying for this all themselves. And again, they're coming back to us after last month, asking us for thirty-eight thousand dollars to rent a piece of property that we gave to them, and now they want another thirty thousand dollars to do a, you know, a development study to finalize the study. Oh, I'm sorry, take that thirty-eight thousand dollars we just gave you for rent for the year and put it towards this. I'm sorry, we give too much to the IDA as it is. They, we have given them over seven million dollars of property, and property that they own solely themselves, not talking about the properties that their names are on, that they have pilot agreements on, that's not what I'm talking about. That's like sixty-eight properties. This is just their properties alone that they own, that they can get profit from it, we don't get any taxes from it, we don't get anything from it, we're paying thirty-eight thousand dollars rent to them. Point of order. What's the point of order?
What does it have to do with the resolution?
Has to do with why we're paying thirty thousand dollars to the IDA.
We're not paying it to them.
That's what it has to do.
Yes, we're not paying it to them.
Rule on it.
Rule on it. Point of order, we're not paying this that way.
Any other discussion?
We're not what?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close?
By most.
Resolution EP three by legislator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I bring this resolution forward, and I urge its adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification, Department of Community Development, Tourism, planning to accept state-operated systems, so we're fine.
All right, this is some rural public transportation money, actually, the state went back, revised their calculations, and believe it or not, found that they owed us money, so this is so that we can receive that money.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. Resolution EP four by legislator stall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I bring this resolution forward, and I urge its adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing the chairman to renew agreements with Squeo County Snowmobile Clubs for the use and maintenance of certain county lands.
Uh, this is our annual recurring contract with the snowmobile clubs to utilize our lands for the snowmobiles.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. Thank you. Health Committee, legislator Karasik.
Have a talk with what you saw.
Well, you can speak, Greg.
No wonder.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion to present HE one through HE five as a block for consideration.
Thank you. Seconded by legislature Christine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry, thank you. Human Services Committee, legislator Reo.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to also make a motion to offer HS one to HS five as a block.
Thank you. Seconded by legislature Christine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry.
Thank you.
Resolution FP one by legislator Martine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution urgent adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution warning for financial services contract, human resources department employee assistance program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is confidential counseling services for our employees within the county, being for a case-by-case basis, negotiated in the union contract used by this.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. Thank you. Legislature.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, waive the rules for two resolutions, one pertaining to an easement, one pertaining to a bunch of money, based on the county clerk's notice.
Thank you. We have a question. Seconded by legislature Karasik. Okay. Legislature. All, all the way, all of the favor?
Aye.
Close?
Four opposed and four opposed.
Carry.
Five opposed.
Uh, first resolution by legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, now for the common resolution, urgent adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing chairman to execute till the easement of the national grid regarding certain county property in the town of Palermo, eighteen twenty-seven, county route forty-five.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the easement is necessary for a family that's due to their county to hook up the power, that are holding up their recently, also an county employee, to leave the research office.
Thank you. Excellent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. Thank you. Tax resolution, legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this following resolution, urgent adoption.
Clerk please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budget modification, county clerk, motor vehicle overtime hours.
Okay, this is overtime hours, so we can catch up to the dealer registration, using the three thousand, three dollars of the toll money, hopes you make back a lot.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislature Christine.
Chairman. Last month I brought the issue that resolutions and special meetings were supposed to have been resolved by us having our committee meetings a week before the full legislative meeting.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, it has nothing to do with resolution.
It does, Mr. Chairman, because the resolution's being brought today. Right now, on this spot, if you say that I'm out of order on that, that is not right, and you know it, and you can ask Mr., you know, Mitchell, it's not, I'm in order on this.
It has to do with the resolution.
It has to do with the resolution being brought forward.
Sir, I'll allow the discussion, but let's go back to the resolution.
Okay, let's go back to the resolution. The reasoning behind the resolution, which was explained in my caucus, was that the department had, didn't realize that he had to bring it forward to the legislature to move money, and that's why it's so late getting here. And I'm sorry, you know, said it's not a reason for what we're going to vote on this, so we're not going to be in favor of this at this time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Or both.
Carry, thank you. Unfinished business. Thank you. Miscellaneous business. I would throw out, although Morris stole my thunder, and Brandon's in the back, the Goodyear Blimp will be at the airport two o'clock, at three o'clock tomorrow. Pretty cool, guys. First time here.
Legislature. Okay, since I got point of order during the debate, I'm going to bring it up now. We set forth to have our committee meetings a week before this legislative meeting, and we have not had, since they was put forth, a meeting where we haven't had a special meeting ahead of time, or a resolution brought to us at the last minute. You guys are not making any sense with basing the rules, and then you just go by whatever you want at the time, and I'm sorry, you guys, it's unacceptable.
Legislature.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I understand what legislature Christine is saying, but unfortunately, in the real world, things do come up. Unfortunately, as a county, doing business, we have to bring things forwards that do come in on a last-minute basis, that's why we have the option, the way of the rules, to bring things forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislature Wilber, any public comments?
Aye.
Thank you. Again, motion for adjournment?
Aye.